Okay, good afternoon and welcome to the Orange County School Board's Rule Development Workshop, which has been scheduled today, Thursday, November 6, 2025. The Rule Development Workshop has been scheduled for the purpose of discussing rezoning Fall 2025. During this Rule Development Workshop, the School Board welcomes public comment on the proposed changes, but I don't believe we have any public speakers. General Counsel? Right. Let me do a quick roll call. Member Salamanta?
Good evening.
Member Farant?
Good evening.
Member Douglas?
Good evening.
Member Vanos?
I'm here.
Member Gallo?
Good evening.
Member Felder?
Good evening.
And the Chair is not here yet, but she probably should, will be soon. As a reminder, Board members will not be engaging in outside electronic or digital communication during the meeting so that we can focus on the matters immediately before us. To my fellow Board members and district staff when speaking, please make sure that your microphone is turned on and you speak directly into it so that our YouTube and Orange TV viewers can hear you clearly. And thank you so much for participating in today's meeting. We're going to start with a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance. And now for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Dr. Vazquez.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. This afternoon, our team is coming to you to discuss some of the rezonings, the feedback that we've received as a result of community input. And so I am going to turn it over to Stacy Neal.
Good afternoon, good evening. We're here to discuss or update everyone on the Fall Rezoning. First, I would like to introduce staff Renata Paropche and Thomas Moore. So, we're here for Fall 2025 Rezoning. The timeline is up on the board. We held our community meeting October 8th. We had our work session on October 21st. And we're here for the School Board Rule Development Workshop. Our next meeting will be December 9th, which will be the public hearing. Just to recap of the rezoning process, School Board Policy JC outlines the rezoning process. We commence with meeting with the Superintendent. A timeline is developed. We meet with principals, executive leaders, and school board members. The research and data is collected. And then we hold our community meeting, or meetings. We're at the rule development and the next will be the public hearing. We keep all information in a rezoning notebook. Refresh her on the rezoning types. We have what's called a technical rezoning, and that is generally uninhabited property. And it involves no students, or has no students involved. We also have what's called a targeted rezoning, and this affects a small area and there are a limited number of students that are usually involved. When we do relief schools, there is an opening of a new school, and this usually involves a large area and a large number of students.
Okay, the next two slides were added to this presentation based on the feedback we got from the Board during the October 21st work session. So, when staff develops or modifies attendance zones, we consider the following key factors: feeder patterns. So ideally, every elementary school should feed into a single middle school and then into a single high school. However, due to varying school size and geographic constraints, that is not always feasible. That said, we make every effort to avoid isolating small portions of a zone and sending those students to a different school as they advance to the next level. In addition, we have demographic balance. We aim to avoid creating zones that intentionally segregate students by race, ethnicity, or socio-economic status. We try to create zones that would minimize bus travel time while remaining safe and walkable for students. We strive to keep existing and planned neighborhoods within the same school zone to maintain community cohesion. And zones should be designed so that the projected student enrollment aligns with the school capacity, ensuring efficient use of resources. And finally, we avoid creating zones where students are cut off by interstates or require them to cross arterial roads. In addition, we use natural boundaries like lakes and streams whenever possible. Okay, so, right now, we've transitioned from permanent program capacity to a FISH capacity. And let me give a brief description of what those are. Permanent FISH capacity, FISH stands for Florida Inventory of School Houses. And for the purposes of clarification, permanent FISH is what we show in the upcoming data. This is just the capacity in the permanent brick and mortar building and does not include portables. So, permanent FISH is now shown on our enrollment summaries and on our control open enrollment data. We also now use it for planning purposes. FISH, however, is actually the comprehensive database that includes every room in all district-owned schools. The state oversees this database and assigns student capacity based on the state requirements for educational facilities, which is called SREF. This is a school-specific building code. Now, as facilities change or evolve and SREF rules change, the state has that power to make those sweeping adjustments to the capacity figures in FISH. Okay? Now, permanent program capacity is something we created, okay? It is an adjusted measure of school capacity that reflects the number of students that can be served at a facility based on the specific instructional programs offered. PPC is typically lower than the permanent FISH capacity in allowing schools more flexibility on how they utilize classroom space. So, those are the two main differences between these capacities.
Okay. Rezoning, back to rezoning on the website where families can find where to locate our current rezonings. If you go to ocpss.net, under Schools, to School Rezonings, on that rezoning website, we have all the current rezonings and works and all board-approved rezonings, or most recent board-approved rezonings below. We also offer the grandfather transfer for students who have been rezoned by OCPS two or more times during a school level at the current address. For a student who has been rezoned from an established school to another established school, and in this case, the student may remain at the existing school instead of being assigned to the rezoned school. For a student who will be in the 5th or 8th grade and will be rezoned to a new relief school, they qualify for a grandfather transfer. Transportation is not provided. Siblings shall be eligible to transfer with a student who has granted the grandfather transfer, and the deadline to apply is April 30th, 2026. We offered community input. Families were able to provide input via survey links that you see here. We allow one input per household, and they were, in the next round, or after tonight's rule development, the deadline to submit survey will be December 1st at 7:00 a.m., or by 7:00 a.m. We also allow for families to submit petitions. Must include your name and address and receive in the Office of Student Enrollment by 7:00 a.m., December 1st. Once again, one input per household. We also allow you to email at schoolrezoning@ocps.net. Once again, one input per household. We will be presenting three targeted school rezoning proposals. Each proposal is supported by detailed maps and demographic data to help illustrate the potential impact on students, families, and schools. I'll walk you through each scenario, beginning with the rezoning between Carver Middle School and Chain of Lakes Middle School. Let's start by reviewing the map to orient you with the current and proposed zones. Green lines indicate current middle school boundaries. The hashed section marks the targeted area to be rezoned. Purple represents the proposed zone for Chain of Lakes Middle School, and green for Carver Middle School. Option 1 proposes rezoning nine middle school students from Chain of Lakes Middle School to Carver Middle School. The primary benefit is a significant reduction in travel distance from approximately six miles to just .3. Here is a zoomed-in view of the area adjacent to Carver Middle School. The next slide represents demographic overview of the rezoning. The first column shows the name of the school involved in the rezoning with the school's Florida Inventory of School Houses capacity. This figure is maintained by district staff in the Florida Inventory of School Houses, a comprehensive database that includes every room in all district-owned schools. Carver Middle School's FISH capacity is 1,240 students, and Chain of Lakes is 1,141. The next column displays student enrollment captured on October 15th, 2024, with a percentage breakdown for race and ethnicity: white, black, and other, and non-Hispanic and Hispanic. For Carver, there were 640 enrollment: 10% white, 89% black, 1% other, 88% non-Hispanic, and 12% Hispanic. For Chain of Lakes, 956 enrollment: 50% white, 45% black, 5% other, 59% non-Hispanic, and 41% Hispanic. The third column shows enrollment on October 1, 2025. Carver Middle School has 541, and Chain of Lakes Middle School 830. The fourth column displays current number of students residing in each zone. There are 937 students in Carver Zone and 1,616 in Chain of Lakes Middle School Zone. The next column shows how many students will be residing in each zone if this rezoning takes place. There will be 946 students with 11% white, 87% black, and 2% other, 87% non-Hispanic, and 13% Hispanic. Projected number of students attending Carver in 2026 will be between 575 and 595 students. For Chain of Lakes, the numbers are as follow: 1,607 students with 60% white, 32% black, and 88%, that's 8%, other, and 56% non-Hispanic, and 44% Hispanic. There are between 840 to 860 students from earlier projections to attend Chain of Lakes in August 2026 if this rezoning takes place. The next column is Farms, Free, and Reduced Meals, and the current percentage for Carver is 76%, and proposed is also 76%. For Chain of Lakes, 37% current and proposed. ESE is Exceptional Student Education, and is 15% current, sorry, and proposed for Carver, and 7% for Chain of Lakes. ELL is English Language Learners, and that is 9% current and proposed for Carver, and 21% for Chain of Lakes. I'll give you a moment to review the numbers. Option 2 expands the rezoning area to include 23 additional OCPS students. The goal is to align the feeder pattern so that all students from Eccleston Elementary School are zoned to attend Carver Middle School. Like Option 1, this area is geographically closer to Carver Middle School, which will result in a shorter bus route while still maintaining transportation services. Here is a zoomed-in view of the area. A demographic breakdown for Option 2 is also available for your review. Please take a moment to review the numbers. It is Superintendent Staff's recommendation for Option 2. We have received input from two families. Option 1, two opposed. Option 2, one in support and one opposed. Dr. Vazquez.
Thank you, Stacy, members of the Board. We are open to answer any questions or take any comments that you might have. We will need consensus at the end of your discussion to be able to move forward with either our recommended option, Option 1, or not moving, I'm sorry, right, our recommendation is 2, but if you're not in favor of 2, you have the right to go with Option 1.
Thank you, Superintendent. Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question about the FISH capacity and the permanent program capacity. I know that we discussed this at the work session as well. But what we report to the state is the FISH capacity, and that's what they go off when, or the Schools of Hope's will go off when they look to co-locate into our campuses, is that correct? So, when we report the FISH capacity, because it doesn't, we need smaller class size, obviously, as you state, for the permanent program capacity. And I know we need rooms for our ESE students, and we're bound, we only usually have a small number of those students in the room. So, that's not accurately reflected in the FISH capacity, nor are our adult students that are attending our career and technical colleges. So, when we report the FISH, do we notate that? Do we make them aware so that the numbers are accurate with the state?
So, all right, so, I think, we'll suggest the two different things.
Yes.
The ESE, all right, let me turn this down. Hello?
Is it working?
Okay, here we go.
Yep.
All right, so the ESE, we are, we have been transitioning so where the ESE is reflected in FISH. There's a few left, a few, there's one, Jesma is working with the state on getting those remaining classrooms coded as ESE classrooms. There's a couple pieces of that. The SREF is a rulebook, basically, on how many ESE classrooms you can have for every school. All right, so, the ones that she can, over the top, just say, okay, we can change these now, she's been given the okay to move forward with those. But there's some that don't follow the rules in SREF, and they need a special exception. So, for example, the rules read something like, "You can put an ESE room for every 500 student stations at an elementary school." Okay? Something like that. So, if they exceed that, it doesn't follow that rule. So, they have to do something called a plant survey exception. And that little piece is something that's going to take a little bit longer. But we're not too far from getting to where all of those ESE rooms are going to be eventually reflected in FISH. As far as, I know, when you look at the whole big picture and you have the center schools in there, and the center schools have adult population, when they, when the state sends that back and saying, "Oh, you're 75% of utilization for the whole district," whatever that number is, and it includes those things we do, usually do, Rory's group usually does some kind of rebuttal and says, "These are those, these are what you're missing from your analysis." And so, but on the school-by-school, we don't, you know, we don't really work with those centers when we're doing these types of attendance time changes.
But we do have a mechanism to where we can, like you said, offer a rebuttal to what those classrooms are being used for. I know, and the reason I'm asking, and I appreciate you putting in for the public what the difference is between FISH and permanent program capacity, because I know a lot of other districts are having an issue with these, with how it's calculated. And I know that there are sub-districts that are working on legislation for the SREF to kind of clean some of that up. And I don't believe we have it on our platform. So, that's why I was asking the questions. I'm internally thinking, is that something that maybe as a board we need to look at and maybe be a part of advocating for that change in SREF so that we wouldn't have to constantly use staff time for the rebuttals on those type of programs? Thank you.
Dr. Vazquez? That's a great point. Additionally, I do want to make sure the Board and the public is aware. Whenever we receive an application for co-location, we also have X number of days to provide a rebuttal, whether it's to indicate that the data they have is inaccurate or whether the district has plans to do a rezoning that's going to put more seats into the school. So, that is also part of that co-location process.
Thank you. Member Douglas?
Thank you so much for your presentation. I have just one question. I'm confused about the community response. Can you please elaborate on this? One, two? What does that, what is this? What does that represent?
So, what that represents, we notify the families of the rezoning. We give them the timeline that you've received, and it goes out, email, and I think it's parent talk now. But they're notified- parent talk now, but they're notified, they're given an opportunity to respond, and we only have received two responses.
I'm concerned about -- I'm just telling you, I'm just really concerned, especially in that area. After we make a decision, I know they will come, like, how come this happened and everything? I -- can we extend this and maybe reach out a little bit more and show them the importance of that decision that we're going to make?
Stacy, let me respond. So it is not atypical. It's not unusual for us to -- sometimes we receive no feedback, so this is not out of the ordinary. It's been published, the school has also helped to communicate that, and so we have not, I would say, in the last five years or so, had a situation where we did the rezoning, had little to no feedback, and then had the families come back in -- up in arms. That typically happens during the process. We had some actually in your area two years ago, maybe three. It was in your area, and they were here, they were not happy, but we can share with you the various communications outside of what we did and what the school did so that families were aware. Sometimes their lack of feedback is that, you know, they're fine, and there's not a large number that are impacted.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Member Vannos?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had one question, and it was also relating to the permanent and FISH capacity or the, yeah, permanent program capacity and FISH capacity, because on that slide, it says that the PPC helped to meet the class size amendment requirements. So my question is, was the FISH amended when the class size amendment was passed?
Yes, there was -- so the class size amendment happened in around 2003, and in 2004, they changed FISH. They used to use a threshold, or they used to use solely based on square footage, they would assign student stations. Then they changed it to a threshold that would apply the 18, 22, and 25. The problem is, even with that change, they left the utilization for the elementary schools at 100%. That means you're going to fill up that elementary school classroom 100% of the time with 18 students or 22 students, depending on whether it's primary or not. And as we know, that doesn't happen. Students don't come in in packets of 18 and 22. And so we made an adjustment, called a utilization adjustment, that took into account those spaces that are created because those students -- you have to break down those classrooms. Now, what has happened between now and -- or then and now is that they've lightened up how they implement the class size reduction amendment. They no longer take every single classroom and say, you have to break your classrooms down, and so you can meet that. They allow for an average by grade level grouping, and by allowing that flexibility, we don't necessarily need to be as stringent with utilization rate like as we have in the past. So now we are going towards the other one, just because that's how the funding mechanism and all those other reasons, we're using the state number.
Okay, so it sounds like the FISH capacity put forth by the state didn't really accurately reflect the reality of what the constitutional amendment passed by the people was meant to do.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
That concludes comments. Do we -- and this is in Member Douglas's district? Are you -- I'm so sorry, Member Felder's district?
I don't have any comment. I think I told her what I meant.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, I said what's that? Thank you, I'm sorry. We talked about it, because it was like a matter of people on the streets, right, about somebody across the street or the next street in terms of the -- what did you call it? Being transferred. The only thing that my concern was that the parents would -- you have some clarity with the parents, you know, that if it's only six kids. Is that what, when it's something like that, six kids, last time we talked?
Not -- well, it's a total of 30.
30? Okay. I just wanted to make sure that those 30 that were going to be transferred, that they -- the parents were going to have some clarity about that, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I mean, I talked to them when we met. I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, so the recommendation is Option 2?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is anyone uncomfortable at this time for -- okay, thank you. All right. Dr. Vasquez? Thank you. We are now ready for the next rezoning.
Our second targeted rezoning involves Acoe Middle School and Robinswood Middle School. This proposal focuses on realigning feeder patterns to create a more consistent educational pathway for students zoned for Citrus Elementary School. The targeted area is currently zoned for Citrus Elementary, Robinswood Middle School, and Acoe High School. If approved, the entire Citrus Elementary School zone will feed into Acoe Middle School and Acoe High School, streamlining the feeder pattern. This change will benefit 48 middle school students. Let's review the map. Green lines, once again, represent current middle school boundaries. The hashed section marks the targeted area to be rezoned. Purple indicates the proposed zone for Acoe Middle School, and green for Robinswood Middle School. Here is a zoomed-in view of the area. The next slide represents demographic overview of the rezoning. Please take a moment to review the data and consider the potential benefits of this alignment. We have received input from one family in support of this rezoning. Dr. Vasquez?
All right, any questions, comments from board members?
I know, again, as we talked about it, it was only one family member that made a comment about it?
Yes.
Well, looking at what I -- this option I like, because it gives them both like about 1,000 students, right? So I like that. Gives Robinswood a little bit more. Chain of Lakes is not overcrowded, so they got about 1,000 or something, so I'm good with that. Right? It doesn't change?
This one.
I say, I mean, I say Robinswood. I'm sorry. Robinswood and Acoe Middle. Yeah, Robinswood and Acoe Middle, I'm sorry. Yeah.
All right, any board members have concerns with that moving forward? All right, thank you. Dr. Vasquez? Now, let's take a look at the Cypress Creek. Okay, okay, so sorry. Back to you, Dr. Vasquez. Now, let's take a look at the Cypress Creek and Lake Nona High School targeted rezoning.
Our last rezoning for today involves Cypress Creek and High School and Lake Nona High School. This proposal aims to realign the feeder pattern for middle and high school students, currently zoned for Luminary Middle School and Cypress Creek High School. If approved, this change will fully align the Luminary Middle School zone with Lake Nona High School. There are currently 136 high school students residing in the targeted area. Let's review the map. Blue lines represent current high school boundaries. The hashed section marks the targeted area for rezoning. Purple indicates the proposed zone for Cypress Creek High School, and green for the Lake Nona High School. Here is a zoomed-in view of the area. The next slide represents demographic overview of the rezoning. Please take a moment to review the data and consider how this proposal supports a more unified and efficient feeder pattern for students in the Luminary Middle School zone. Currently, we received input from 18 families, 17 supporting, and one opposing. Dr. Vasquez?
More comments? All right, do we -- I'm sorry, Member Ferrante, you're recognized.
Okay, thank you. This is, I think, a great plan moving forward. I really love how we are trying to streamline the feeder patterns, which will really help kids stay together longer, so excited to see that there's been a lot of support. It is true that we don't always get as many, you know, feedback from the community response, but when we are sending those out, it's really just to that targeted area. We're not sending to the entire school of Cypress Creek or the entire school of Lake Nona, correct?
We do not always send out to the entire school to get the whole school, you know, that may not be affected by the rezoning.
Which makes a lot more sense than why the support opposed, the community response, is not always as, you know, vibrant as we're hoping. I'd love to see the 18 responses for this one, but with our others, I can see why we don't always get as many. If it's only maybe targeting 20, 30, 40 kids, you're going to get less of a response. But excited for this, and I definitely support it, so thank you.
All right, any concerns? All right, moving forward. That's it, right? All right, anything else? I do have one thing before we adjourn, that I'd like to propose that we do a work session on. It has to do with the book review process. Right now, as it stands, the only books that we're reviewing are the ones that are brought to by members of the public that have concerns, and I'm sorry.
We're having a hard time hearing you.
Okay, I was going to say it's on, but I don't hear myself either. I said, I would like to hold a work session on our book, what's the word, for challenge process, because I think it makes -- well, it makes sense to me that if there is a concern by either Allison Kibbe, for example, or the superintendent, that there ought to be a way that they can bring a challenge forward, if you will, or have the authority to make that decision, or at least bring that to the board, rather than having a book that perhaps the superintendent or Ms. Kibbe is concerned about, and there being no method, as I understand the policy, of removing that book. I just, I feel uncomfortable that we have a superintendent that doesn't have the authority that a parent or a member of the community. So unless there's objection, I'd like to schedule it for at least a conversation. Okay, okay, all right. Superintendent and I'll work on that. Thank you. Anything else before we adjourn? Member Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just two things quickly. The first one is, and I've spoken to Dr. Vasquez about this already, but there is -- we are a part of the Central Florida Coalition currently that we're involved in, that we have meetings, and we go to the breakfast during the FSBA conference. There's also a custodium of school districts that is based in South Florida that has small and large districts, and I, if it's the pleasure of the board, I would really like for us to join that coalition as well. We don't get a lot of input from the urban districts like Hillsborough in our coalition, and I think Hillsborough is joining the one in South Florida, and I just think that it would be a good way to collaborate with larger districts that are the size of ours. So I don't know if I need, like, board approval or consensus for us to join that coalition as well.
So I strongly support that, and I kind of, I don't know, you said there's also some smaller school districts.
Like Charlotte County is a part of it, Lee County and those, but then you've got Broward, you've got Miami Dade, Hillsborough is joining.
Yeah, I think if, you know, I could wave a wand.
I think Palm Beach County is there, too.
It would be all the largest districts, because the needs are different. Not necessarily more, they're just different. So anyway, I would strongly support it. I think should -- Mr. Palmarene, is this something that we should put on the board's agenda, just to bring it forward so that we can?
I would be more comfortable if we did that, yes.
And Member Salamanca, you wanted to speak to this or to something else?
I have one more thing.
Okay, go ahead.
And then, I don't know if it's the board pleasure, but there is currently some legislation in Tallahassee about lowering the age for long guns and guns to 18. So I received an email from a parent and a member of the Moms Demand Action Group if we would consider doing like a resolution or speaking in support of keeping the gun at the age of 21, considering that we do have students within our schools that are 18, and we already have open carry. And so the concern is that, you know, kids really, you have to be 21 to buy alcohol, you have to be, I mean, your frontal lobe's not fully developed, and really should be 21. And in light of what's happened in Seminole County recently, I'm devastated and concerned with children being able to get their hands on guns, and if we lower the age, they'll be able to get them quicker. And as it stands right now, if you're a hunter, you're still allowed at 15 to go hunting with a gun, so we're not trying to take anybody's rights away, but we don't currently have anything on our platform to really speak to this, so I didn't know if it was something that the board would like to consider. I know in the past that we have sent stuff to our family about safe storage of guns, which I'm so appreciative of and thankful for, because I do believe that that is impactful and has made a difference. So I just wanted to bring that up for discussion to see if it's something we could even do, and maybe Mr. Palmarene can speak to that, or if that would even be the will of the board.
Let me respond to the second part. Well, let me, Mr. Palmarene, is there any reason you think that the board couldn't pass a resolution on this matter?
Board could certainly pass a resolution just for the information under 790.115. Regardless of whether somebody's 18 or not, it would be illegal for them to possess a weapon on a school campus, so the law would still prevent them from doing that, but there is nothing that prevents the board from passing a resolution if that's its will.
It would be more along the lines of like what we did with safe storage, just us saying, we need, we want our communities to be safe, and we feel this is the safest way to do it.
Personally, I think a resolution on that might be more effective, and I think that we can word it in a way that isn't necessarily offensive, but just explaining kind of the rationale as well, that if an 18-year-old has a gun at home, yes, they're not allowed to bring it on the campus, but it becomes much more difficult for us to monitor that when there's, say, a rumor, and now you go out to the house, does he have access to a gun? Yes, he, I shouldn't say that, he or she has access to the gun, but they're not going to use the gun. I just, I hear where you're coming from. I would be very comfortable with that. What we have done before on resolutions is work with communications, the superintendent and I draft the resolution, then it would come back to the board for approval. So you're seeing what the language is, and at that time, you all can make a decision on whether you're comfortable with. But at the same time, if the majority of the board doesn't like the idea at all, we want to save the time of not doing that. So if, again, if there are significant concerns, we won't, but I don't see that. So we'll go forward with drafting it and then bring it back to the board. And thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, now, Member Salamanca?
Thank you, Chair. It was actually in response to your suggestion on books. So I'm fine with it if the board is overwhelmingly in support of it, but we disproportionately spend so much time on books, and we have the past year, and I'm, given how much other work sessions we have on Scooters, Schools of Hope, enrollment, like, those are the topics I really want to prioritize, and what I would warn folks is that is going to open the can of worms once again. And what I would warn folks is that is going to open the can of worms once again for a lot of things. And so I just want to be mindful of that. So I personally would not be in support of opening up the topic for the time being until the school year begins again, and we can talk about that. But that's just me. Thank you.
Okay. Member Vannos?
Just in response to both of these comments on the book review policy, what is this, I guess the concern was the superintendent didn't have the ability to challenge a book. So I guess I just want some clarity on what is the ability, what is the current ability of the superintendent with respect to a book that, or a book that she has a concern about? Like, what is the current policy?
Yeah, and I'm glad you asked that, because I just, I find the policy a little odd, but then I was here and approved it. So, Mr. Palmarene, maybe I misunderstand how the policy reads.
So there is the one provision in the statute, or in the policy that talks about, and this is Policy IJL, subsection 2B. It says, "Challenge materials may, shall not be removed immediately. Such material shall be available for student use pending a final decision. Notwithstanding the foregoing, only the superintendent or designee may temporarily remove a challenged material during the pendency of a request for reconsideration if the superintendent or designee believes it will be disruptive to the student learning environment if the challenged material were to remain available, or if the superintendent or designee determines the material contains pornography or materials that is harmful to minors slash obscene." So what that policy speaks to is if the book is challenged, then the superintendent can make a determination to remove it during the pendency of the challenge. It will still go through the challenge process. There is no mechanism, as I read, as I read the policy, if the superintendent has a book that's brought to her attention that talks, that she believes would not be appropriately on our shelves for her to independently remove it just on her own. Now, we have had situations where the state has said, "These books are pornographic, harmful to minors, and they shall be, you know, removed." And in that case, the superintendent has done so to ensure that we remain in compliance with the state's mandates on it. But if it's not a state, if it's not a book that the State Department of Education has told us is inappropriate for having on our shelves under the various ways that books can be removed under state law, there's no mechanism for the superintendent to independently remove a book.
And, Member Vannos, it, I think I mentioned this probably more than you all want to hear, but when my son was in middle school, and the assignment was check out a book on, from the banned bookshelf. And so when he brought it home and mentioned it, it was the first time I knew that he ever brought a book home from the library. But it really caught my attention, because I was like, "Oh, this'll be interesting. I'll read it." I was thinking it was going to be, I don't know, like, a classic piece of, you know, material. But when I read it, it was a book about, it's fictional, but about a kid who, he's swimming, somehow these other kids take his trunks off. He's out there in the water naked, and they won't give him his clothes back, so he waits until it's dark, and he comes out, and he's, you know, the same kids are bullying him, and that was one example. So he decides to get even, and he hunts each one of them down and tortures and kills them, one by one. Okay? And not only does he do that, but I'm trying to remember, it was right after, what was it? It was right after one of, it was like our first mass shooting at one of our schools. And Columbine, yeah, yeah. And literally, it was a month or so after that. And then he also talks about, he thought it would be so difficult, he didn't know, I don't know how much I want to go into, because I worry about people getting the same concern that I had, that... I'll explain.
You were concerned about it.
But very concerned about the wrong student reading that and getting a very different idea in his mind about how that could play out. At the end of the book, if you get to the very end, it's all, like, he, this guy travels back and forth in time, and you realize it's, like, you know it's not true, it's fictional anyway, but it just troubled me enormously, especially in light of the time we were in. So I went to see the principal and thought it was going to be a simple matter of showing him the book. And so he checked with the media specialist, and he called me back and said, "No, the book's going to stay on the shelf." And I was like, "Have you read that?" And he said, "Yeah, but the media specialist said the book's going to stay on the shelf." And I was just perplexed. It seemed really strange. And to be honest with you, I was in office, and he said, you know, "If you want to, you can fill out a form and try to get the book banned." And I was, like, thinking, like, I know some parents are thinking that, "Why is it my responsibility to be, like, the book banner in the community? Isn't it the school's responsibility to make sure that we don't have stuff in our libraries that might promote a child to kill somebody when this just happens?" So I just, I was just utterly perplexed. And so I went to see the superintendent. Well, first, I went to see my school board member, Susan Arkin. Asked her, "Would you read these two paragraphs? It'll take you all of five minutes." She came out of the room, holding the book, walked into the superintendent's office, slammed it down on his desk, and was like, "Why is this in the library?" He didn't have the authority either. So he ended up, after reading those two chapters, he ended up calling the principal and said, "Here's what I would do if I was you. I would check it out, I'd put it in my desk, I would leave it there for a long time and forget what happened and lose it." Okay? So it, you know, for me, it was real. It was a real situation. It was a dangerous situation. And when I realized that, no matter how much the superintendent, the school board member, no matter how much they all agreed it was dangerous, the media specialist had more power and authority than they did. And so I did not realize when we adopted this policy that that would take away the authority. I just didn't read it that way, that the superintendent or Ms. Kibbe could not say, "You know what? This isn't okay." They couldn't even go through the challenge process. So that's why I wanted to bring it up. And we can discuss it ad nauseam, and I know Member Salamanca won't appreciate that. I could bring some language forward, and it would be, like, short and sweet, "We're okay or we're not okay." Or if the majority of the Board just feels like what we have is what we should have, then this is what we'll have. I'll just continue to strongly disagree that that much authority should be placed in a single media specialist and principal.
I understand, I understand what you're saying. I mean, I'm, I think I have questions about the policy from a different angle than you do, so, but I can also see Member Salamanca's point, and I'm trying to weigh the pros and cons of having the superintendent as the person who is having to challenge books. So I don't know if that's, yeah, so that's what I'm weighing in my brain, but I'll let everybody else speak. I see others have keyed in.
Superintendent, did you want to respond?
I just want to clarify that, number one, I do not want to be the individual that challenges the books. We had that conversation. I want to clarify, the concern that I had was the state says, "These books need to come off your shelf." And our policy does not allow me directly to say to remove them. And so in speaking with general counsel, he explained that the, you know, DOE has the authority to give direction, and so even though it's not specifically in our policy, we can still do it. So that was, that was a concern. My interpretation is that if we found a book, if I found a book that I thought should be challenged, I was able to challenge the same way a Board member could by filling out the form, if I'm mistaken about that.
No, you're resident of the county, so you could fill out a form if you wanted to, yes.
So, but I understand where the Chair is coming from, but I wanted to be clear that I do not want the responsibility of being the challenger. It really has to do with, there's a book that's been, you know, removed, the state says this has to come off your shelf, our policy doesn't directly account for that.
Member Vannos, any follow-up question on that? Okay, Member Bird, Vice Chair Bird.
But this is, this is where my head is, though, General Counsel, is that this Department of Ed has the authority to direct her. She's the CEO of the school district. How does she not have the authority to give direction to any employee in the school district? I mean, in all honesty, she has that authority. I don't, I don't understand why we're, why that would even have anything to do necessarily with, this is about challenged material, but if we're talking about her overall authority over employees within the district, she has that authority. She should be able to direct an employee to do anything, quite honestly.
Oh, no, no. Understand, there's many complex facets that come in here, right? I don't know if she's taken the media center training, right? And so anybody who's supposed to allow a book onto a shelf should have, or to take a book off the shelf should have taken the media center training, right? And so there's that provision of it. You know, the media specialists at each one of these schools are statutorily empowered after they take the training to pick books at the school, and they have to ensure that those books they pick for inclusion in the school library. And by the way, school library includes all the classrooms as well. So any book that's made available in a classroom meets the standards of the training that's been put out by the state. So I understand that generally she's the head of the school district, she's the chief executive officer, and she directs the day-to-day operations of all of the employees, and she can give directions to employees. There is no doubt about that. But books is a little bit, it's a gray area because of the training requirements, in my view. So, you know, if she hasn't taken the training, and I don't know if you have or not, we've actually have many conversations, but that's never one that we've actually had. If she hasn't taken that training, you know, what would be the basis for her to say it either comports with the training or it doesn't, right? I mean, she's obviously very intelligent and knows generally what she needs to be done in a classroom, because she's been a teacher, a principal, et cetera, et cetera. But that training component threw a wrinkle in for me, right? And so where I am comfortable is when the State Board of Education says a book is, violates statute, it's pornographic, it's obscene, it's harmful to minors, it should not be in any library. She does have the authority, because DOE does have the supervisory authority to say, "Hey, that book needs to come off," and then we have to comply with that under state law. That's where I'm comfortable. But as for just her, you know, "Hey, getting the book brought to her attention and saying that book needs to be pulled off," that's not directly addressed in the policy as we have it right now.
Got it. Okay, and from what I'm, just looking at the policy briefly, it looks like it's a matter of just a couple of words probably adding in, if we needed to do that. But I also respect the superintendent's opinion of not wanting to. I don't know. Again, I, again, the last book that was just brought to be challenged was in four middle schools, was checked out one time ever in the history of having this book. So again, we're having these conversations, and we've got bigger fish to fry. So I kind of agree with Member Salamanca, but I don't know. I, I don't know. If the super, does the superintendent feel like you need that authority, but you just don't want that authority? But do you feel like this policy does need to be addressed?
So I do, and we talked about this when we did the policy, that, and I, my recollection is that no one wanted one person to have that ability. So, for example, we can talk about the recent book challenge, which, you know, I have my opinions about that book, and if it should be on the shelf or it shouldn't. But I don't, because there is so much controversy around books, and what, you know, one person may say, "Well, that has some, you know, content that if I'm a biology teacher or, you know, I would, I would share that." Others would say, "Well, you can have other books that have the content without the pictures, and you would be able to get that same information across." So I do not personally want that responsibility, because it is, we will get into the same arguments that someone would say, "Well, the superintendent removed that book." And I did go through the slides of the training, but I still, there's, in my opinion, there's a lot of gray area when making that decision, and that's why I leave it, I believe, the committee decision. The Board still, if there is a decision that is made by the District Literacy Council, it can come to the Board, and the Board as a whole can make, you know, that decision. And I think that that's in the policy. And I understand the Chair's concern, because if we have a book and we can't remove it, but we can, if it's, if it's, right, we can take it off while it's being challenged. My main concern was violating the policy as a state says you have these books that have, that need to come off your shelf. And so that, that's where, where I have my preference, but as always, I defer to what the Board would, you know, want me to do.
Okay. And in that case, I agree with you that the committee is probably the best place. I don't necessarily have any desire to bring this policy back.
Okay. So the last time the state gave that direction, this Board had to give the superintendent that approval. That's what we, yeah, that's what we did when...
We gave the consent decree about the two books.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. I just want to be clear on that, because I know what you're saying, that she's the chief executive officer, she gets the direction from the state, she should have the authority. Yeah, which was, in all due respect to our General Counsel, was, I think, the direction that we got at the time was that superintendent...
Well, I want, I wanted the Board...
Okay, okay.
A, to be aware, and to be able to, you know, weigh in. Again, I feel very strongly that there's so much emotion around the book issue, and I want to be perfectly transparent, and I want the community to understand the why behind it. And then if Board members don't agree with it, give you also the ability to voice that concern. And then at the end, it's the majority of the Board. So that is why I brought it to the Board.
Okay, I'm sorry. My recollection is different than that. I'm sure you're right, because it's, it was what you decided. I thought we were in a position where you didn't feel like you could do it without our approval, which is different than, than going to the Board because you felt it was appropriate to get our consent. Okay, okay. All right, Member, I'm lost track. Member Felder? Okay, yeah, Member Felder.
Actually, I wanted to thank you, Chair. When Bormer McGallo talked about, oh my God, the guns. I just wanted to say that even though, and I think Attorney Palmarene said that whatever policies we put together has, of course, coincide with the state, but I think it would be, for lack of a better word, good for the public and the community to see, as a Board, that we do have concerns about the use of weapons in our schools, and we would, as much as we can within our power as a Board, to... and we would, as much as we can within our power as a board to control that as, as much as we possibly can. Because as she said, if you're hunting, you can get it, what, at 15? If you, you know, if you're hunting, no one takes anybody right. But then also, we're having, you know, more than not, children, teenagers, high school students that are using guns. And I just want to mention this, on last evening with the lift and Harlem Kids Zone, we had a neurosurgeon who's going to work with us, he's going to partner with us. Oh my God, he had a, this, a picture of the skull of a teenager was shot with the gun and the bullet was lodged in the brain. And what he had to do, he had pictures of it. He had to take the skull out and do all that stuff, but he had to leave the bullet in because had he taken the bullet out, the child would have bled to death and died. So I said, I really would like for you to come talk to some of our schools. And I think if young people could see, see what that looks like, you know, guns, you know, are dangerous. And if they could see that, so that this young man, he's living and functioning, but he has a bullet in his hand and it will not be removed at all, can't be. And so I don't, I think that the fact that Boardman McGallo talked about, we needed to kind of come up, even if it's through a work session, with some kind of policy to deal with that so that we can show the community, we're in good, we have good faith in knowing. Because there are so many parents have come up and mothers against, you know, violence have come so they can know that we are, as a board, very concerned about the welfare of our, of our children, our students. And that, again, Attorney Palmorini reminds us, if there's a statute that comes out from the state, we have to comply. You know, if they change, I pray that they don't, you know, if they change the law and it's voted on, my God, oh, I just hope that doesn't happen. But if they do that, we have to, whatever policies that we make with that, it cannot go against the statute. But I'm glad she brought that up. And I wanted to say to those that are listening that you need to know that you, we have good faith in wanting to make sure that our children are safe. That's what I wanted to say.
All right. Thank you, Member Felder. Member Ferrante.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify then with you, with the superintendent. With the book policy, let's say you were to be out and about and someone comes up to you and says, have you heard about such and such a book? It has this explicit content? Or maybe it's, you know, the whole thing is about suicide and it's all about suicide and how to commit suicide or something horrific in that sense, that's something that we really wouldn't want kids reading. And do you have the authority then? You hear about that, you look through it yourself and go, okay, wow, this needs to be reviewed by the committee? Or do you just say, you know, what, what is it that you're saying is your authority?
So my understanding on the policy is that I could, I, I can, just like any board member here, do a challenge. I would probably say to the individual, have you completed a book challenge? And go that route first. And then depending on why they're challenging it, it would either start at the school level or there, it would come to the district literacy committee to be able to review it and then make a recommendation. That's my understanding. Now, we get a, a letter from Commissioner Stasi that says, these books have been reviewed and we have found them to have inappropriate content, they need to be removed. Then what, I have the authority to remove them. What I would do is, as part of the next meeting, I would bring it to the board as part of my comments, which is what I believe we did last time, there wasn't a resolution, and just say, we've received notification, these books are going to be removed and we'll note it on the website.
Wonderful. I appreciate that. I do think as a board, something that, you know, the reason I think we're always coming back to this topic is because we have never set that standard of what is okay in the schools. Do we want to have books with multiple F-words in them or detailed sexual acts? Like, do we want murderous plots or, you know, suicide is okay? Those are types of things, and I understand maybe nobody wants to discuss that and, and whatnot. But this is why we just keep coming back to it, because there are some pretty intense books out there. And then as we're seeing, there, a lot of them are books that aren't being checked out. So why are they being purchased in the first place? And we're using taxpayer money to purchase books that kids don't want? Just, it's sort of a whole, we could be here for hours, which is why we have been here for hours. But I do believe that if we had some sort of standard, then we're not here. The media specialist knows exactly what's expected of them. If a book is found with something that we've already stated is not something that we're going to, the standard that we're not allowing in the schools, then it would be removed. But if we don't set that standard, we'll just always kind of come back to this topic. But.
All right. Thank you, Member Ferrante. Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I, I personally believe we do have a standard that's in place on what's allowed in our, our libraries, our media centers. I think that we hire media specialists who are experts in their job that can determine when they curate the books and they purchase books, what is appropriate for their libraries. With that said, I have a question about, I, I know when we first created this policy, at the time, we knew that we would always have to come back to it. We knew that there would be some things that we would have to tweak. We knew when we passed the policy, I believe if we, we go back and review, that we even said, you know, we will have to bring, you know, we'll have to review this policy. I, I agree with Member Salamanca and Member Bird that we spend way too much time on books for the amount of books that are being checked out. I do believe in transparency and I do believe, as the superintendent did last time, there was books she was getting questioned by the DOE, she brought it to the board, the board gave consensus, boom, done. The only thing that I would add to that is that in the future, just in order to be transparent, that on the agenda somewhere, we will let people know that we would be discussing it just so that if they want to tune in or say something that they can just, just, I'm always going to be about transparency with our community, about letting them know what this board is doing so that they don't feel blindsided or feel like we're doing something in a way that they don't approve of or they don't think is appropriate. But I do remember having conversations about, one of the issues with the policy was regarding the principal, our, our need to really change the policy as it relates to the principal and the principal making that decision. Because that doesn't make sense to me, that a principal has a decision to, to remove the book, but the superintendent doesn't have the decision to remove a book? And so I don't know, like, I, I don't know if we need to review it because of the principal, because that's the concern that I'm hearing about our policy the most often is the, the principal and the burden that it puts, puts on the principal. But I will go either way with this board. I, I do feel like we have talked about books to death and they aren't being checked out. And so I would prefer to, to talk about other things that are really impacting our school and our, and our students' academics and our student outcomes. But if the board feels like there's things in that, in that policy that we do need to kind of clear up as discussed prior, then I'm happy to have that discussion. Thank you.
All right. Member Vanos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to first comment on this, I think to close this out, I, I think I'm going to land on the side of leaving the policy as is. My concern has always been about the authority of the Board of Education. And, and as I've said in public meetings before, obviously I disagree with it. But, but as long as I know that the superintendent is going to bring those books to the board just to let us know what is, what is there, I'm, I'm okay keeping the policy as is. The only other question I wanted to ask, and this is back to the, the long guns, was I support the resolution. Is this something that we should put on our legislative platform? Just a question.
Chair, may I?
Please. Definitely.
I think a resolution would suffice because I don't, as a board, I don't recall a time that we ever had anything that on our platform that was really outside of our purview education-wise. And I think that a resolution would be more appropriate. That's my opinion.
Yeah. And I, one of the reasons I thought a resolution also, I think it'll get more attention. Yeah, yeah. And unfortunately, when we're going door to door with our legislators, oftentimes we're not getting in the right doors. The doors we're getting in are good people and they agree with us, they're just not, not on the right side, literally, the issue. So I think, I do think a resolution's a good way to go. Okay. I'm the last speaker up. I, we've been at this for, I'm sure, over a half an hour. I think we had our work session. And I'm glad that we all discussed that we don't want to waste any more time on this. I obviously, to, just to echo the sentiment that, that the principals have an authority that Allison doesn't have and the superintendent doesn't have, strikes me as, back to you, John.
Yeah. Actually, I was looking at the statute and the statute specifically has a section on school principals. School principals are responsible for overseeing compliance with school district procedures for selecting school library media center materials at the school to which they are assigned and notifying parents of the process for objecting to the use of specific materials. So statutorily, they are charged, like the media specialist, for ensuring what goes in the library. Also with respect to the school principal, just so, we all know this, but that policy is long and has many different facets to it. If a challenge is the book is pornographic or the book is harmful to minors or it contains sexual conduct, they bypass that first step at the school literacy council and they go directly to the district literacy council for a decision district-wide. So what the principal really has to decide is, challenge is based upon inappropriate for the age and grade and maturity level of the student, but not the, the sexual categories. The sexual categories go directly to district literacy council.
All right. Thank you. Member Vanos, you're, okay. All right. Any further business to come before the board? Seeing none, we're now adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.